Hi, welcome to the Board of Select meeting on February ninth, 2023. Let's all stand and say the place of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
Thank you. All right. Um, do we have a motion on the minutes from January 12th and 26th?
I make a motion, we should have the minutes.
I'll second it.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. So now I need to read this. The Select Board of the Town of Stockbridge hereby calls a meeting of the proprietors of the lands to be included in the Beachwood Lenstock Maintenance District at Town Hall on Thursday, March 23, 2023, at 7:30 PM.
I'll make a motion, please.
I'll second it.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we'd like to approve the warrant for the Beachwood Lenstock Maintenance District meeting. Do I have a motion?
Second. Make a motion to.
I'll second it.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, excellent. Uh, we got a referral from the planning board for ACE, uh, changes to the sign zoning bylaws, the sign regulations, uh, and they provided us with the draft. It is my understanding we need to refer this back to the planning board. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
What?
For a public hearing.
For a public hearing.
I make a motion, we move her back to the pl- uh, planning board for a public hearing.
I second it.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Let's go fast.
Mr. Canales, this is Art Krieger, President of Beachwood Lenstock Association. Thank you and to the board for the votes that you took a few moments ago.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
How you doing?
All right. Our next thing we're going to do is a, a, uh, just a quick update. Uh, we're doing project updates and I invited, uh, our Chief of Police, uh, Chief Finley, uh, Chief Garofoli here from the Highway Department, our Highway Superintendent, just so that we can talk about, uh, with the board and with the public, if there's any questions, comments about just general public safety slash highway, highway issues. Uh, you guys want to maybe start and just say anything for a minute or two each and, you know, any kind of things that are on your mind? And then if the board has any questions or the public has any questions, uh, we'll, uh, we'll take questions and, you know, just have a quick discussion.
Do you have questions?
Yes, but I didn't know if you wanted to start.
Sure. Uh, I can give you a little update of what we're up to. Um, so we're getting ready to start planning for Mercy Sunday. Uh, we've made our requests for, uh, help from MEMA. Uh, as we normally do, they're going to be full, full capacity this year. Uh, so last year we were at about half. They limited the buses. This year it's going to be as it was pre-COVID, so, um, that's a big deal. Um, we should be ramping up here with Tangowood shortly to begin planning for that season as well. Um, and that's, you know, that's about it for the big stuff that we have. Otherwise, it's just normal daily operations.
Good. Uh, how's it going?
It's going good. Um, from the fire department side of things, they passed a new fire code, so we're working on training and getting updates on that and implementing that. Um, the state's been working hard on adopting a new NFPA code that they're basing ours off of. Uh, format's going to change, but it only affects me, not the delay person. Other than that, uh, the department is moving forward. We're continuing with fire prevention and, uh, code enforcement and our normal emergency response activities.
And how's the, how the roads this winter?
Unfortunately, we've been, uh, been, uh, been good with the salt use, but our frost in and out of our dirt roads have, uh, you know, our stone is made up for it. But, uh, no, we're, we're, we're keeping that up. Um, uh, we're just, uh, getting ready for the upcoming season ourselves. Uh, we're working a lot with parks and recs. We got a lot of good things starting with there, working close with cemetery. We've got some real good projects starting up with that. Um, we're continuing to outfit and outfit our shop as well as our equipment. Um, I can't wait till we get in a set where we can start doing some more educational things, you know, some more, uh, you know, learning and figuring out how, uh, we got, our new snow fighter's got the salt spreader calibrators, uh, tracking system in it so we can, you know, take storm totals, so hopefully we can carry that same theme into the rest of them. Um, we're looking at doing some, uh, road surfacing this, this summer. Um, we're out working on that, getting that, uh, measurements and, uh, getting things out ready to go out to bid and hopefully we can get some of that going. So, um, improvements with the compactor. I think the compactor area is looking real good. Uh, you know, we got good personnel in place with there. Um, working to improve that with him, even moving forward and making some more improvements. Um, that's kind of where we're at. We're just trying to.
So paving 183?
Yes, we're looking at 183 North as well as Hawthorne Road up there. Those are kind of our key, key points this year, uh, really focused on that. We got some crossings. Mike and I are working on looking at a couple of crossings and, you know, try to get that kind of done ahead and hopefully can, uh.
We just didn't spend, uh, Chapter 90 money yet, did we?
No, so we have a couple of years of buildup of Chapter 90. What we're doing is putting together a comprehensive list of a number of roads that we want to do. Once we get that cost in, we'll compare it against our Chapter 90 and then possibly use free cash money to offset and let's really do a complete overhaul. I got a question, just.
We're hoping that, we're putting together a wish list and hopefully we can do it all, but if not, Mike and I will work together to prioritize and, and work on that, build up that. Sorry.
Do you find that the Hawthorne Road and, and, and like the north part of 183, you know, degrade faster because of all the traffic around Tangowood? Or is it just that something?
I just think it's more of a main hub. The road's only, you know, the travel lane's only 12 feet wide and most trucks, you could tell that, you know, where the truck tracks are. I mean, it's, I think it's just a, it's just a result of a lot of traffic. That's a main hub, you know, coming in and out and, you know, it's not a lot of room to, you know, you're kind of in one path.
Trying to give the pilot guy some ammunition, but that's okay. All right. You guys got any question for these guys?
Yeah, like, uh, a highway garage, you ever down that way, you know, Huey's there, stop there and look at it. Um, look at the equipment, look at the garage, see if you taxpayers money went. It's, it's just a beautiful complex and it's very well maintained. And when all the trucks are in there lined up, clean, put away, um, it's a real.
Thank you.
A real step on the set, better than ever was. And it's, I just want to compliment you and you guys of really taking care of the place and the equipment.
Thank you. I'll pass that on. Actually, today, uh, I reached out to a, well, Gettys, Gettysburg Flag Company. We're looking at putting a new flag in down there and really dial it up with some, you know, some shrubs and stuff, working with, uh, conservation on that. So we're looking, we see where we want to go. We're going to try to get there as fast as we can, so.
Maybe at some point you can have an open house or something.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, it's a, it's a really nice, what it was before to now is just wow.
One piece down there that we're working on the engineering and that's for the salt shed.
Yeah.
And then we would have completely overhauled the entire area.
Let's get that done and get the, uh, that little, uh.
Yeah.
The other.
Yeah.
Thing done, the, what I was trying to say, the swap shop thing.
Yeah.
And then maybe have a, a nice open house at some point.
I actually reached out to Harold French. I talked to him today at the end of the day and, uh, hopefully I said, hopefully we'll have an open house and actually tie into a dedication. If we do do a flag and do something down there, maybe that all kind of one big thing and make it mean, mean a little more maybe.
Yeah.
Did you guys ever come up with a rock for the, you know, Revolution War Memorial?
I believe Harold did.
Yeah, he actually has to go look at some, uh, he got a call, he's got to go look at it, he told me today, so he'll be looking at that.
Excellent. All right. So I just got a couple of questions, um, and then we'll open up to the public. Uh, how are we doing in terms of budget versus expected expenditures around plowing this year? Are we?
In good shape overall.
I think so. Highway is in pretty good shape. Um, you know, we had a couple of repairs that I wasn't anticipating, but, you know, I was kind of hoping to, um, um, have a little bit more to restock, more, more purchasing power and more at the end of the season. But, you know, we'll see where we're at and, you know, move forward as long as our equipment's ready to go. That's the main priority, so.
And how's the new equipment working?
I could tell you exactly where we are in just a moment.
Well, I mean, it's weather.
Good. You know, we had a couple of hiccups with stuff, but, uh, that's with everything these days, but all in all, it seems, seems really good, so.
I mean, your biggest issue this year is the dirt roads.
Yeah.
I mean, it's thawing and freezing is just way too early.
Yeah, we spent a lot on stone and we spent a lot on, um, um, you know, driveway mixed dense grade filling. Uh, our hope, well, we know that when our new salt shed is in, we can buy bigger.
Bulk.
Bigger bulk stone and get it in nested, uh, early in the season so we don't have to add salt so it don't freeze and that will help keep our, their roads locked down as well, you know?
Right.
And there might be some outstanding, so out of the 90,000 we've spent 55 so far.
Right.
Um, and I'm not sure, you probably have a couple outstanding.
Yeah, I got a couple of big tickets out, but yeah.
Yeah, but next week it's supposed to get weird weather again, they're saying, so, you know. Uh, and how about, um, you had some really interesting statistics around, uh, like pre-COVID and post-COVID and, you know, a number of calls and people kind of, you know, having some issues as they came out of COVID. Mind just talk to that a little bit?
So, um, before COVID, the numbers were just below 500 and they, as soon as COVID hit, um, mainly the years 2021 and 22, when COVID really hit, our numbers went above 500. We were at 511, 515, and then 2022 was 513 for calls. Typically those calls split to be about 50% fire-related calls and 50% EMS calls, give or take one or two percent depending on the year. The only year that varied from that was 2022 where we actually saw 54% fire-related calls versus 46%, 46% medical. I think that can only be attributed to that a lot of people were being exposed to, uh, medical conditions and, and communicable diseases at that point. Um, we're seeing more colds, flus, everything else that's spiking now. So far this year, it's too early to tell what it's going to look like at the end, but we're, we're heavy on the EMS side right now.
And you get a lot of, um, false alarm calls, like what percentage of overall calls are kind of just alarms going off that, you know, is there anything people can do about those to help you?
Yeah, so most of, of that 50% of the call volume we see that's fire calls, well over 50% of that is in the false alarm category. There's two types within there. There's mechanical or, or failure of the device that's caused the false alarm and then there's unintentional setting being, being activated. Usually that's cooking smoke, steam from a shower, you know, something environmental that set it off that wasn't intended.
All right.
Um, most of those can be prevented. Um, people using kitchen fans when they're cooking and keeping their, their frying materials covered with a lid can help reduce some of that smoke and reduce some of those false alarms. Uh, when they're using their showers, if they have bathroom fans to use them and if they are not equipped with bathroom fans, opening the doors more slowly to release it instead of opening them all at once and then the rush comes out and hits the detector in the hallway.
Right.
Um, we see some of that every year. And the other thing is fireplace usage. We have people that don't necessarily know how to operate or, or don't remember how to operate the flues effectively, so sometimes they back some smoke up into the house and we, we respond for those as well.
I've never done that. Okay. Uh, uh, and just one other question. Um, uh, with so much cold and maybe a snap next week, what should people have for like an emergency kit in their car?
Nowadays, an emergency kit in the car should consist of, uh, warm blankets, um, a backup storage, uh, power device for your cell phone or your other electronics because nowadays most people rely on their cell phones for communication with family, friends and 911. So having a storage device or a capacity device, um, that you can buy to keep in your car that's already charged, so if your phone or your car dies, you can still charge your phone and use your phone. Um, they do mention AM/FM, uh, NOAA weather radios. Most people don't use the NOAA weather radio side, but they will use the regular radio side to see what's going on sometimes. Um, and a lot of times we tell people, wintertime, extra gloves, extra hats, um, you know, spikes for your boots if you have to walk on ice or whatever, especially if you, if you're off the road and not visible from the road and you need to climb up an icy embankment for any reason. And then, um, uh, that's really about it for an emergency kit. We'd say water if it wasn't freezing. So.
Right. And, uh, and I just got a couple for you. Any new creative scams that you're seeing like in phone, in person, anything that, you know, preying on, you know, kind of unsuspecting mortals, mere mortals?
Yeah, I don't know about new. Uh, they're always inventing new ones. Um, some of the ones that we've seen in town recently, of course, I mentioned in the, in the, uh, updates last week, the sheriff's scam. Uh, people might receive calls from someone saying they're a deputy with the Hersher County Sheriff's Department. They're not.
Okay.
Um, but that's an old scam. Uh, you might get calls from someone from, say, the American Police Association or something like that. Police departments don't solicit over the telephone.
Okay.
Be very wary of any calls you might get, uh, about that stuff. Um, text scams are kind of new, uh, where they're texting, they might text you, you might get a text that might appear to come from your bank, um, looking for your personal information so they can activate, uh, your debit card or something like that. They might say your debit card's been frozen. We need your information to unfreeze that. So beware of those. Um, and then the old, uh, email from a friend scam saying.
Right.
You know, this is your buddy Joe. I'm at the store right now. I'm trying to buy gift cards and my card won't work or, uh, my account's frozen. Can you, uh, give them, give me your credit card number so I can buy these gift cards?
Right.
Um, or you purchase the gift cards and give me the, give me the numbers off them. Um, those are unrecoverable. As soon as they get the numbers from the cards, there's nothing anybody can do about it. So those are ones that we've experienced here in Stockbridge we've gotten calls about, so.
Interesting.
Uh, how about, um, uh, how's recruitment going for the, oh, sorry, what's that?
No, no, go ahead.
How's recruitment going for the open position?
It's a work in progress.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, it's, uh, we're a few months down the road on that. Um, we used to not have a lot of problems recruiting people to come here.
Yeah.
Um, because the pay and the benefits here in Stockbridge are very attractive. The town's attractive. Um, however, uh, our, our pool now is gone, of course, because there's no reserve officers anymore. Uh, I don't think people really are attracted to this job anymore, uh, to be honest with you. But like I say, uh, it's a work in progress. I've been working with Mike on some ideas and, you know, we'll see how that goes.
Good. So how's morale for everybody and is there anything we can do? And just how we're, we can, can we help you just anything at all, anything you need from us?
Um, no, I think highway, uh, constantly improves. I think, I think, I feel it does, you know, I think it improves. Uh, working close with departments, water sewers have been great. Uh, I reached out to Emergency Management as well as, uh, Chief, Fire Chief here and, uh, who found some grant money to get us some new, uh, truck mounted flashlights for all our trucks, so we have that through them, so thank you. And also some gas cans for the cemetery as well as the highway, some safety cans are coming. I just want to thank them for their hard work on, on that. And another thing, uh, just to put out there to apologize, we're trying to streamline our phone and our answering system at the Highway Department. I get a lot of calls from people wondering if the dump's open today and, you know, what's your hours and do you take this? And I'm not at the desk much at all. I'm, you know, that's just the way it is. And by the time I get to them, it's late and I try to call people back. So we're looking, anyway, real quick, we're looking at streamlining that, uh, through the compactor. Would the, there will be fielding a lot.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, we'll have an expansion or a line or something that will go in to help field that, make it more streamlined, so.
Good. Anything else? How about the public? Anybody have any questions for these guys? Oh, thank you, Laura.
Hi.
Laura.
Hi, I just wanted to say to the transfer station, I called and I left a message, um, about, uh, bringing a carpet there and I got a call back the next day and I was really happy about that, so thank you very much.
Yeah, it's usually what happens is it's usually, I try to get back that, it's usually the end of the day and, you know, I try to time it where I can get ahold of somebody, but that'll actually be better moving forward, so thank you.
And what's the plan around, you know, the new like fabrics and mattress laws or whatever? Like, is that something we're ever going to deal with or is that just set up an issue now that the state passed a law without any kind of plan to help us deal with it?
Go ahead, Hugh. Uh, our dump attendant is being really proactive. Is that the word I want to use? He's really looking into things. We're setting him up to have the ability to help streamline that and he's spending a lot of time researching that. We had a couple of people stop by and, you know, looking at textiles and how to store them and recycling. Uh, that's becoming an issue with everybody, uh, Western masks not taking leg bulbs anymore. So we're trying to get that so we have that ability, but also be able to recycle them the right way. So he's, he's heading that up.
Right. But we can't drop mattresses off currently.
No, and those transfer stations can't, so we send them to, uh.
Valley.
Valley.
We send them, so can people, oh, you send the people?
We send the people, we cannot accept.
What does valuing mean?
It's the WTTF Waste Treatment Facility in Lenoxdale.
Oh, okay, okay.
The seller just bought them out.
I just, okay.
Yeah.
I haven't dropped up.
So, so we'll, we'll, we assist people in coordinating where they can take the stuff that we can't.
Right. Okay, good.
Our limited, small, uh, facility and some of those things we just can't do, yeah.
And he also, our dump attendant has that information, contacted people, though, you know, can't reach out to them because their hours are changed and stuff down there as well, so they have permissions available, so.
All right, anybody else? Nope. All right. Gentlemen, thank you very much for your time. Sorry for making you come in at night. That was very helpful.
All right. The next thing we got on our list here is, uh, project updates.
Project report.
Yeah, so we have a number of projects that we continue to be working on. Um, we have finished, you might have heard me go over some of these at the last Finance Committee meeting, but we've finished the engineering on the, uh, Tuckerman Bridge and, and the preliminary, uh, information that need to get done. Uh, we're going to be setting up, because we have to do some additional borings in order to move toward the Chapter 85 design. Um, one of the things that we thought we'd run into and we have run into is the fact that that will have to be raised because of the, the, we have to design the bridge around maintaining a certain height. This is above the 25-year flood events and that's going to require us to go up. So we have the old footings that are there. They're still going to get reused. What's going to actually happen is originally we thought we were just going to build on top, but because when we did the bore sampling, we ended up down realizing there's really nothing down there. It's all sand. So they're going to actually, we're going to put the pieces that the bridge is going to sit on, it's going to be behind those. So we're going to basically pour behind and it'll be there. And then what it'll do is lift the bridge up, but the old abutments will still be there and then on top we'll be pouring some additional pads of cement that'll support the deck there. So from outside, you'll still see the old ones, but we have to raise the whole decking up.
Is it, what's the impact on the budget for?
Uh, not substantial because the biggest thing that we were concerned about is whether or not the footings themselves were going to be and we can reuse the footing. So if we couldn't, it had the potential of really shooting that cost up. Um, so we'll do our next set of borings, then we move into the full Chapter 85 design and approvals from the state. Once that's done, then we move forward with the actual construction bid documents and then go out to bid and then do it. So, uh, you know, we're still hoping to be on task for a beginning time of 2025, uh, summer construction season of, um, and that's going to be the same for the Avrak Road Bridge. So the Avrak Road, second bridge is under Chapter 85 review, uh, with, uh, base data engineering, what's the company assigned to us. They've gone to a new format with the Small Bridge Program where the, they've contracted, pre-contracted engineers and they just assigned us one. Um, I was hoping a little bit that it could maybe go after the grant application this year, but it doesn't for the construction, but it doesn't look like we're going to have the design done yet, so more than likely that's following year. So the hope is, is, uh.
So basically assigned to someone who doesn't have any time to do it?
No, it's just the process of getting through it. Uh, it would have been tight. I still got my fingers crossed if we can get into the later one, maybe the construction season of 2024. Uh, more than likely it's probably the construction season of 2025. Um, it's just the process of getting through everything and getting it done. Um, as Hugh had stated earlier, uh, we're working on coming up with a plan for black topping of roads this year using our Chapter 90 money and the rest. Uh, good news is overall prices went down, have come down from their highs of just, uh, about eight months ago where black topping was sitting incredibly high. Uh, not that it's back lower than it was before, but it's still not as high as, as it was.
Good news.
Was, so, uh, overall that, that is good news. Um, the salt shed is right now under engineering. We've had some preliminary meetings and, um, we're following up with just some ideas of how we want it configured inside. And then whether or not we'll have the money to be able to do some cold storage down there too, to get some of our equipment out of the weather on a rotating basis around the stuff that we're not using, because obviously we have some summer equipment, some winter equipment that, just like all of us probably do with our sheds, where you rotate them from, and that. So we're going to be working on that. So, you know, we got a, a lot of projects, um, in the pipeline right now.
Right.
So, um, but we've, we've got a number down and, and we're just going to continue to knock this list down overall.
Good.
Um, so.
Streetlights?
That's the plan. What's that?
Streetlights?
Streetlights? Thank you. I almost forgot about that. Yes. Thank you. Uh, streetlights are going to be replaced. Uh, so, um, we put something, uh, myself and Laura put something in, uh, updates, uh, telling people, we have a piece on our, our website. You know, I will caution people, when they first go in, it will look a little different. The typical thing is within a couple of weeks, you won't even notice it. Uh, and then we'll go from there. But if we do end up with concerns, my office will be handling it and if we have to do some diffusers or some other things, we'll look at those at that time. Uh, but overall, it's going to be a substantial, uh, savings to our carbon footprint, um, by adjusting from the older light systems to the LEDs. And, um, it's, it's a, it's a really good project overall. So, uh, we are beginning to work on an electrical aggregation plan. Um, so that, that's something that the Green Committee is working on right now. And then the, uh, charger stations here at Town Hall, uh, we have four that are going in and they will be happening this spring. And we're also putting in the, uh, pads underground. We're going to be doing all the wiring. So eventually we can have 10 spots there, but the initial one is we will have four. And then if, if we see that demand is there, we can expand.
Got any questions from the board from Michael? No? How about the public? Any questions on projects? Hearing none. All right, on to the next thing. Uh, Pinewood's and Heating Court update. So, uh, there's been some talk lately about, you know, some of the challenges, uh, you know, uh, you know, or, uh, I think in general affordable housing tends to be underfunded in this country. Uh, it's no shock that it has been underfunded here. Um, and, you know, there's a, there's a number of, of, uh, of challenges, I think, maybe more so Pinewood's and Stockbridge Housing Authority, but both of them have a pretty significant capitalist that we're going to try to work through. And I, I believe that, uh, that you both got, uh, the initial and engineering assessment. Uh, you know, and we're going to, we're going to try to work with Pinewood's through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to, uh, to, uh, take a look at, at those open issues and try to do more of a top-down approach and plan so that we see what the, the entire budget's going to need to be. And then, and then as a, as a second step, really, you know, take a look at how we can help and how we can potentially leverage state money, uh, or federal money to help get the job done. So, you know, I, I just wanted to, you know, make sure you guys were apprised of what some of the stuff going on is, I think of the Stockbridge Housing Authority, you know, there's a, there's also at least four or $500,000 in capital projects that they've got going. Uh, they've done a pretty good job of leveraging state money. In fact, what, uh, you know, uh, one of the things that we're going to talk about next is, uh, is, is a minor request they made to us for some ARPA resources. But, um, but generally speaking, you know, uh, I think it's an interesting balancing act and, you know, we're looking forward to working with our partners, but we also want to work from a position of knowledge and, uh, and, uh, and really understand what the scale of the need is and, and then use that as a, as a springboard to figure out how to finance it. So, um, anything you got, any questions or comments on any of that stuff?
Until we get, uh.
Okay.
Final report.
All right. Uh, so, uh, in talking with Andrea, they had, they did have a problem during the deep freeze, uh, where they had a burst pipe that was basically a $20,000 repair and, uh, and she put in a request, I think I forwarded you guys the letter. I should have put in the packet, but sorry about that, Ron. And, and she put in a request, I think I forwarded you guys the letter, I should have put it in the packet, but sorry about that, wrong. And, and she was looking for $5,000 to pay the deductible for the, the insurance claim is going to pay 15,000 of that cost. And she's asking if we could help her cover 5,000 from ARPA, that just helps her get order right away. And in addition, they've got, they've got an, got a grant from the state for a parking redesign. I guess there's not, not only not enough parking the way it's designed, but there's no spaces for all the kind of home health aides who come in to visit. And I guess that's become a problem, especially in the winter. And so they're, they have a project where they've gotten, I think it's $150,000 in state aid, but it's tied basically for every 250 in, in state aid, they need to get a dollar in local aid. They're not even really ready to ask us for help with that, but what they do need is, as a precursor, they've got a topological, topographical survey that they wanted to see if we could help fund. I think the whole survey is 15,000 and they're asking us if we could do five. And so if it's okay with you, I'd like a motion to use $10,000 in ARPA money for the Stockbridge Housing Authority, for Heaton Court. If we discuss or not discuss.
Yeah, you do have it in your packets.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So it's 5,000 to go to pay the deductible for the sprinkler system damage. Now the 5,000 to.
Support a report.
This will be poor for the parking.
All right.
Issues. Legally, we use ARPA money for that?
Yep. What's our balance of ARPA now?
It's still over 300,000. I could call it off, but it's well over 300,000.
And have we given them any money yet?
Not from ARPA.
Okay. I feel okay about the water, because they need water and sprinkler's safety. I'm not sure about the driveway. I don't know why I'm hesitant about.
Dracula pensive, what's on your mind?
I just, I'm just tired.
I mean, one of the things that ARPA was put out specifically at one of their, even though we can use it now for any municipal purposes, the original purposes were water, affordable housing support, and and emergency COVID stuff. But now you can use it for any municipal purpose, so, yeah.
I'm just, I think I'm a 5,000 now, I really get the bids for all that. Who knows whether to go back and ask for more? How much interest do we have in this? I mean, is it, who runs it?
Stockbridge Housing Authority?
Who takes the?
Stockbridge Housing Authority is a quasi-public agency that runs Heaton Court. It's not like, Pinewood's is owned by construct, Stockbridge Housing Authority actually owns and runs Heaton Court.
Who? Is that local, is it?
Yeah, yeah, it's just, Andrea works for it, yeah, yeah.
Towns people?
Like Patrick said, the housing authorities are quasi. There's appointed, there's appointed people from the town, there's appointed people from the state. There's a committee that oversees it, so, you know, it's, we work really well with Heaton Court and we do a lot of combination stuff with our Council on Aging that's now back up and running. And it's, yeah, we're in a very good relationship and this is something that could really help them out at this time.
And we have a local board that, I mean, like, I don't, is Barney still on it? Barney and Jim Welch and, you know, we got, it's basically run by, you know, it's like a.
And we still have a substantial amount of money in, and this is one of those things that we were identified to use. So, you know, for at least another year, we have a year to appropriate funds to.
And believe me, if we just want to do 5,000 now, I think that they would appreciate that the pipe burst was not something they anticipated. And, you know, we haven't got, I've reached out to, you know, all of our, both the public safety guys, all the three gentlemen who are here tonight and asked if there was any use of proceeds from ARPA that they needed. And they didn't feel like they had anything emergency or that was unanticipated. I've done the same with Parks and Rec. I haven't, it's not like we're, we're not, you know, making, making the town know that we, we have these resources that we can deploy. And this came up and so I figured I'd put it on the agenda, but, you know, I think anything is.
I have no issue.
All right. Okay, cool, so I'm going to make a motion then.
I'll make a motion, we do the $10,000.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. And we're going to table the discussion of Town CPC projects. Most of the projects just came in and there's another select board meeting before the CPC voting meeting. And so I'm going to give everybody a chance to review them, including myself, because I don't believe the deadline is till tomorrow. So we're going to just table the Town CPC projects. Let's see, we need to take action on a one-day alcohol license for the Berkshire Botanical Garden.
I'll make a motion, we grant the one-day alcohol license.
All right.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right.
Do you just have their hand up?
Oh, sorry, who's, I'm sorry. Who has their hand up?
Nope, I guess not, I thought somebody had their hand up for.
All right. On public comment, I just wanted to start by just announcing and reminding people that both Representative Smitty Pignatelli and Senator Paul Mark will be here Monday morning at 10:00 a.m. and they've blocked out two hours and they want to meet people. You can come in person, you can come on Zoom. We'll be publishing, have we published the link on the website? Make sure.
We didn't get the links from them.
No, no, we're going to use CTSB, because Rich wants to broadcast it. I think, that's what Teresa told me today, I'll let you figure it out, but.
I think Teresa handled that, but we're getting it from.
Okay, well, whatever we're doing, whatever we're doing, you'll be able to join it via Zoom or come in in person. I believe there's coffee and donuts. However, the graphic shows cappuccinos with a little swirly foam and I guarantee there will be no cappuccino in foam. So I just wanted to just make sure that people understood that. But seriously, it's a great opportunity to meet our new state senator. Say hi to Smitty if you haven't met him yet or if you know him. And I just hope people turn up for it, because it'll be a really nice way to welcome them to town. Any other announcements or comments from the board? No?
Micro Transit, there's been a delay because of staffing, so hopefully by the end of February, it should be up and running. But it's coming.
Can you just explain what that is for everyone real quick?
So Micro Transit is Egremont, Great Barrington, and Stockbridge, where it'll be an on-demand service with the small senior buses for anyone that needs a ride, especially on Sundays. And it's a supplement, it's not a part of the BRTA, it's some, it's separate.
Good. All right, public, is there any public comment? We see a big gallery. All right, hearing none. We need to go now go enter executive session, and I'm just reading this paragraph right now. "Anticipate executive session in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Paragraph 21, Section 8.3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining as meeting in an open session would have a detrimental impact on the board's negotiating position, police-union contract." So, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we go into executive session.
And then come back to public.
And we're not going back into public session.
Public session, tonight, thank you.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, I, Patrick.
I, Chuck.
I, Jamie.
All right, thanks, everyone.